Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order. First, I want to thank Phil and Wallingford for hosting us. Hey, I'm giving you, I'm giving you a button. Hey, hey. Thank you for getting this all set up for us.
Thank you, Carol.
Much appreciated. And so if everybody will
We're over here.
rise, the flag is over here, the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all right. All right, I would like to look for approval of the agenda with the following change, that we move public input and announcements ahead of board member appointment. Would anybody like to make that motion?
I second the motion.
Well, I'll make the motion that we move
Never mind.
public input.
Yes, before board member appointment.
Before board member appointments, I make that motion.
Okay.
One, actually, can I back up? Sorry. Do you also want to move board discussion and public comment, or leave it where it is?
Oh, yes.
I didn't think about that till just now.
Yeah, so we have to move public input announcements and board discussion of public comments.
Gray, are you comfortable with changing your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
And second?
My second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. All right, public input and announcements. Pat, do you want to start?
Sure, why not? Thank you, I'm Pat Bowen from Wallingford.
Thank you.
When I was on this board, I was very passionate about advocating for math interventionists. And as a past math interventionist in this district, I know firsthand the value and importance of that service for our children. So when the Finance Committee deliberately budgeted for two district-wide math interventionists, I really felt our district was addressing a very real need, and I was very proud of that move on our district's part. I've been checking school spring quite regularly since the budget passed. I saw the ad which stated anticipated position, which I was told by our superintendent, was precautionary until 30 days after the budget passed. When I checked school spring today, the ad was no longer there. I was unable to really get clarity on why this is, but I was told that there were some internal applicants. My hope is that two candidates have been found and offered contracts. If not, my hope is that you will continue to advertise. If we haven't filled those positions, it still is only April, and I truly hope that this board is fully committed to filling these positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Anybody else? Ken?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. I'm Ken Fredette from Wallingford, and I'm here just to plug my friend Dave Potter here, who has thrown this hat in the ring that Dave has served on this board. I've known Dave for about 20 years. He was, we first met when he was a freshman representative up in Montpelier, serving on the House Education Committee. And we're neighbors, and as far as neighborhood's going, Vermont, he's on one side of the mountain and I'm on the other, but if you go far enough into the woods, our property's actually above. He's a teacher for what, 31 years?
Full time.
Science teacher, driver's ed instructor, which proves he's patient and
And bored.
and he also served in the legislature for a long time. He knows education. I think he'd be a fine addition to this board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Okay. Board have any response? All right. Okay, so we're going to talk about board appointment. We had three applicants for the two seats in Clarendon. The Clarendon Board recommended the first two people who applied, who was Rich Clark and Denny Miller. But the Board can make their own decisions. So what I would like to do is, I noticed that all three interested parties are here. I would like to have each of them, I have a question, a couple of questions to have you speak to, give you about three minutes to talk about, to answer the questions, or talk about why you want to be on the Board. And then after that, if any of the board members have a question of any of the candidates, we can facilitate that, and then we will take a vote. Sound okay? All right. So, Rich, why don't we start with you? And introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested in joining the Board, and how you think you can contribute to the school district and the school Board.
All right, my name is Rich Clark. I'm a professor of political science at Vermont State University, Castleton, in their 13 years. I've had two children come through Mill River School District, middle school and high school, and I've been in the community now for 13 years. I'm passionate about education. I moved from Georgia, University of Georgia, to Castleton, which was a teaching college because I was interested in teaching, interested in education. I've been an advocate for students for a long time, and I think that the, what I can contribute to the Board, I think I have a long experience, I've been in education from, I earned my PhD in 1989, I've been in academia all of my life, and so I have a, I think, a good understanding of education, the power of education, the transformative power of education, and I think that I can contribute by sharing my experience with that, with teaching, understanding the job of students, with the rest of the Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Let's wait, we'll let everybody go, and then we'll ask questions. Denny, would you like to talk about why you're interested in joining the Board, and how you think you can contribute to the school district and the school Board?
Sure, yeah, I'd love to. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. Hello, everybody. I haven't met many of you yet, but I look forward to the opportunity. So I moved into this area back in 2019, and I absolutely love my neighbors and I love my neighborhood. I have a lot of free time, I'm retired Army veteran, so I've been wanting to be able to get back to the community, and when I heard about the board seat being open, I thought this might be a fine opportunity. So I threw my hat in the ring, and I look forward to fielding your questions and seeing if this is going to be a good fit. So, thank you for your time.
Dave? Will you introduce yourself and talk about why you're interested in joining the Board, and how you think you can contribute to the school district and the school Board?
Good evening, yes, I'm Dave Potter. I taught school a long time at Rollin High. 31 years full-time, and another 10 part-time doing driver's ed. I taught biology, chemistry, driver ed, and health. And so I know the classroom from inside. I've also been a legislator for 16 years in the Vermont State House. The first term, I was on the Education Committee, and then I moved over to the Transportation Committee. The Speaker appointed me for a calming effect, if that gives you any clue about kind of my mannerism. I want to add a couple things to my resume, because when I applied, I really only thought two people were going to be applying. And I was on the UVM Board of Trustees for six years, so I've had experience in higher education, having to think about that. I know a number of kids from this year's senior class at Mill River are going up to UVM. I think it's an excellent choice. You get a real bang for your buck with education going there. I know it happened to me, it opened a lot of doors that wouldn't have been otherwise. I have a master's degree in systems management, which isn't to brag, but it makes me think about problems systematically, rather than just focusing on one small aspect of it. I also have been in the military, 30, over 30 years, four and a half years on active duty with the US Air Force, and I was a weapons controller there. Also had about 28 years' experience in the Vermont Air National Guard. I retired as a lieutenant colonel, and commanded a squadron of over 100 people for more than six years. While I was on active duty, I actually was responsible for the air defense at night. I was a night duty officer for the air defense of the whole Northeast. That includes New York, New England, all New England, and New Jersey. If an unknown or an enemy bomber came in, it was up to me to make the decision to scramble on that particular unknown. I guess the rest will wait for questions, but I have real concerns about what's going on now in the legislature. I think you made a wise decision to invite the legislators here. The legislature ends in about mid-May traditionally, so you need to, if you want to have an input into shaping policy for the state, they're going to, they're going to set districts, and you're going to have to conform to whatever they propose. If you want input into how those districts are going to look, you better speak up, because I know how the legislature works. The bill is in the Senate now, so the Senate is the place that you want to focus. And of course, every one of you knows, the mission, the main mission of any school Board is to provide education for kids, because it's so important to the future. Healthcare and education are the two most important areas in the legislature, or what you have to think about with regard to getting kids what they need as adults.
Thank you. Do any board members have any questions of any of the candidates?
Carol, I have a question.
Yes.
But it's a question for you.
Oh.
If you don't mind, could you explain to us, I guess there was a recommendation made by the Clarendon Select Board for two candidates, and there's three people here.
Yes.
I wasn't present at that Select Board meeting, but you were. Can you explain the process and the timeline of that?
Well, the whole process was that Brian notified the Select Board right after the first vacancy, and then I think you notified him after the second vacancy.
Which is a statutory requirement that we notify them. I think it even says immediately, so however you interpret immediately. We tend to, board meeting, next morning I'm lighting them.
Yep. And then the vacancies were posted to Facebook forum, and they were also posted to the Clarendon Elementary School newsletter and the Mill River School newsletter. We received a, I actually did a timeline. So we received, Rich Clark submitted a letter of interest
To the Select Board?
To the Select Board and us.
Okay.
Which I forwarded to the whole Board. Denny submitted a letter to the Select Board, but did not submit one to the full Board.
To the school Board.
To the school Board, sorry. And then I contacted Denny, and he said he was going to submit a letter, but he didn't submit a letter. And then David expressed an interest, submitted a letter to the Select Board and to the school Board, which I forwarded to all you guys. At the Select Board meeting on Monday night, Denny was there, and when I told the Select Board that we hadn't gotten a letter from him, I didn't even know he was still interested, he wrote his letter at the Select Board meeting, and then
Well, to be clear, my letter intended was submitted to the Select Board, sorry for interrupting, about three weeks ago, and I always under the impression that would be appearing before you guys to more give a verbal and in-person kind of approach to my application, rather than an actual typed out, you know, essay.
Okay.
So I was a little sidetracked by that. So I showed up to the meeting, because the Select Board reached out to me, and gave me a heads up that this was kind of being done, where like they're kind of trying to erase my submission. And so, so I came to the Select Board meeting to find that that is kind of what was being done, and the Select Board wanted me to be on the recommendation list, so I gave my introduction, sat down and typed up a little letter to send to you guys to be a more formal introduction, and, and they moved forward with the two selections that they went with.
Yeah.
And so I don't know why there are three people here, but that's, is what it is.
Well, just to clarify, I did email Denny. I did talk to Denny and say he needed to submit a letter to the school Board. I sent him my email address for him to submit it to the school Board. I never received a letter.
So that explains why the, but your letter sort of came later, later on.
It came on Monday.
Thank you. That's what I was curious about.
The second letter came, yeah.
Right, one, the more details, okay.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a comment and then questions. You mentioned something about why there are three people here. There's basically a statutory window of opportunity when there are vacancies that are too late to have people run for school Board. And so, you know, there could be six people here, as far as that's concerned. And the Select Board in Clarendon has the role of making recommendations, but it's the school Board, the unified school Board, has the ultimate authority to make the decision. So that's why we have more than two people here. So, and just to clarify that. So I have a question, and I'll start with you since we're chit-chatting.
Sure.
Just, if you could, give me kind of a high-level view of your understanding of how the funding works for education Vermont, like, how do we come up with the money? How does that work? And I don't mean in the nitty-gritty details, but just like a high-level view.
So like a 50,000-foot view would probably be taxes are allocated from property owners, and then we allocate those funds to programs that are needed to make sure that the children are instructed properly so they can be successful adults, from the top down, and then we can get more specific from there, but
Okay.
I've never started on the board of an education facility, so I don't know. But I'm a quick learner, so.
Thank you. Dave, same question.
Well, the school Board sets the budget for the district, how much is going to be spent, and then they essentially send a bill to the state, and the state in the legislature has to figure out how they're going to pay for it. Is it this tax, that tax, whatever is going to be assessed to pay that bill? You know, it's covered presently by motor vehicle taxes, by real estate taxes, and other areas. And, but they're, they're the ones that decide how it's paid, but how much the bill is, and where the bill comes from is right here, locally. And then they're added up, and the legislature has to figure out how they're going to pay for it.
Thank you. I have the advantage of going third, so, but I'll follow up with, with Dave said, essentially, the Board writes up the budget, the voters adopt it or don't. I'm fortunate in this town so far that they tend to adopt it, and then the funding comes from, again, property taxes and other assessments that come back to the town. And then in addition to that, for special education and other needs there, you have federal dollars that come in for those functions. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from any board members? Okay, so, all right, so now, what we need to do is we need to take action, board action. And what that involves is someone needs to make a motion to appoint one of these, one of these interested parties to, first, the vacancy that was created when Andrea retired and then, or retired, resigned.
And I'll interject really quickly.
Yep.
That is, that is a term that lasts until 2028.
No, it has, it goes to
Hold on, I'm getting there.
Oh, okay. All right, I know where you're going.
It's a term that lasts through 2028. The individual would need to be re-elected to that term this next town meeting day, or the next special meeting that's held. Doesn't you, that doesn't often happen, so safe to say next town meeting day, they'd be running again for a two-year term, just for clarity, for what that person would do.
They would run on the next town meeting day.
Correct.
Would that have the potential to be contested at that point?
Yeah, somebody else could run, absolutely.
It would be open to two-year term.
So it's not, yeah, that position, and then whatever the, because they're all, we're all staggered, so then whatever the natural position that also would be up would, you know.
And just, just so you know, you have it in your head, the next vacancy is up next year, so the next vacancy would be a three-year term that somebody is running for next town meeting day.
Okay. So next town meeting in Clarendon, there would be a two
There'll be a two, and there'll be a three.
Effectively a two-year term and a three-year term.
Yeah. And, and people will have to, yeah.
That's good for interesting, interested parties to know, keep in mind.
Yeah, so I want to, just, so I'm sure the first position we're talking about, is that the three or the two?
That's the two.
That's the two.
Okay.
The two that goes till 20
28.
28.
Okay, so you need somebody to make a nomination, effectively?
A motion to appoint.
A motion.
Just to give a little clarity there, if they got to run on town meeting day anyway
Yes.
For two open positions, one of two years and one of three years.
Yes.
You're still
Everyone's
Everybody's going to have a left.
That gets appointed tonight, it's just until town meeting day. Yes, but when you, when you run again, you're running for the specific term.
Unless they choose to run for a different term.
Does that make sense?
Okay. I guess so. They'd only be necessarily on the Board for one year.
Yeah.
Or could be.
The remainder of
The remainder.
Till the next town meeting day.
And then there would be a further election for the remainder of one term and a new term.
And the new term. Yeah, because one of them's up totally, yes.
Was the Select Board recommendations specific to terms, or just
Don't believe so.
Just two people?
Yep.
Okay. Just curious about that. Okay.
Hey.
So are you, are you looking for
I'm looking for a motion to appoint someone to, the first seat would be Andrea's seat, which is the two-year, that would go till 2028.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dave Potter to that seat.
Is there a second? I can second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. So now I need a second motion to appoint someone to the seat vacated by Doug Earl, and that's the one that's up at the end of this. Okay? End of this school year, well, till next town meeting day, yeah. Okay, would somebody like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Rich Clark to the other position.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All right. All in favor? Can I oppose? Are you a nay?
I'm just abstaining, I think.
Oh, you're abstaining. Okay. All right, motion carries. Okay, welcome to the Board.
I'd like to thank all the candidates.
Yes, I would. Thank you all for putting your names out there.
Stepping up.
Yeah, I would say it's incredibly difficult to make a decision with just quick conversations, not really knowing folks that well. It's, but speaking for myself, it's difficult to vote on something like that.
Yeah. So you guys have to go down to the Town Hall and get sworn in, and then you'll be official members at our next meeting, which is May, what is it, May 6th? 7th? Oh, then that's
7th, I think. 7th, yeah.
I think they can participate in the meeting, they just can't vote, if you're just appointed to the Board.
Oh.
And if they want to participate.
If they want to.
We can, I understand.
Yeah, that was happened to me.
Yeah.
I think we told you
In theory, the Chair, you can let anybody do, participate.
Oh, okay. Well, if you guys want to pull seats up and
When is the next meeting, and where?
May 7th.
May 7th, and it's at Mill River.
At Mill River, and 7?
At 7 o'clock.
7 to 9.
Yeah. But you're welcome to join our meeting tonight, apparently. I kind of missed that memo, but yeah. So you can have input, et cetera.
But definitely make sure you get sworn in.
Yeah, get sworn in.
When you have an opportunity.
Okay. So moving right along, approval of the minutes from 4 to 25. Someone like to make a motion to approve those minutes? Okay.
I'll second.
Gray, any changes, discussion? Okay. All in favor? All right, everybody. Okay, and so now, we get to hear, we get to have a Wallingford update, which I'm looking forward to. Go for it, Phil, thank you.
Yay. You're welcome.
All right, should be all set up here. This is a brand-new board here, folks, so, I've never used it before.
Oh, great.
You need a teacher to show you how to do it.
Yeah.
Or a student.
A five-year-old.
Yeah, it would be better. Yeah, it would be better. Actually, yes, you may not know this, but our schools are full of IT assistants. There are all the young people.
Oh, right.
Hi. For anyone here who has not met me, I'm Phil Hawn, the principal here at Wallingford Elementary School. This is my third school year at Wallingford, but I took over in April of '23. I will be celebrating my two-year anniversary of being the principal of the school in 12 days. Wallingford is a wonderful place to be a school principal. I'm really proud of what our team has accomplished since I became interim principal two years ago, and then the permanent principal just under two years ago. I have some updates to share with you, but first, I owe you all a very big thank you, and there's a few specific reasons, which I'll get to later, but first of all, I just thank you for serving on the Board. Thank you to our new members. So exciting, we had two vacancies and three people that wanted to take that on. I think that's a really good sign. But thank you for your commitment to our kids, and for all of your time and efforts. It is a difficult thing to be on a school Board, David, not just when you have to vote on new, new members, but there's a lot of important decisions that go on here that have a great impact on everyone I work with on a daily basis. And so we thank you, thank you, thank you for everything you've done. And now specifically, I was talking to Mr. Abetal in the hallway, and he noticed when we drove in that there's no longer an outbuilding over here on the side of our school. There used to be a very ugly and frankly unsafe single-wide trailer just outside of this school building on our campus over there, and it's not there anymore. And so thank you for making that happen. I had provided a little correspondence to our Building and Grounds Committee, I think it was somewhere around six months ago, talking about how I really felt like that building needed to go away, and I think the other thing I highlighted was a need for some new flooring on our main level. And so that building is gone, and this summer we'll get some new flooring, and so I feel very heard and supported, and I really appreciate that. And so does everyone else who comes here every day, I promise you. People are so excited that that outbuilding is gone, and even more excited that we're going to replace the floors, for I think the first time in a long time, you know. It feels like the things are happening, and that's really been an energy boost. So, like I said, your decisions have a great impact on all of us, and we appreciate it. Yeah, I got to use this. So the first thing I want to talk about, because last time I presented the Board to the So the first thing I want to talk about, because last time I presented the board, this was the only thing I talked about, is behavior incident data, my personal favorite topic. Back when I became principal at Wallingford, I told the hiring committee I felt like it was a really good fit, because sort of the two things we needed here immediately were a lot more structure and some systems around how we deal with student behavior, how we recognize positive behavior, but also how we respond to unexpected behaviors. And the other thing we really needed to do was to do some improvements around school safety. And those two things I felt like were my wheelhouse, and so sure enough, you know, I became principal here, and we have worked really hard on those two things. And we'll talk about how our behavior data looks now. In my second full year here, was our second full year, you know, using PVIS, which stands for Positive Behavior Interventions and Systems. We have a PVIS team. The cool thing about that is this year at Wallingford, that is actually our entire licensed staff here is involved in our PVIS team, because we've been using our PLC time, which we get once a month after school, to talk about behavior data. And as you'll see, I couldn't get this to populate, we have a, we have a new sort of information system, it's only a couple of months old now. I couldn't get this to populate exactly the way I wanted it, so we don't see months in order, which would be better. We see them in order of number of documented incidents. So you'll see in September, our first full month of school this year, we had 91 of those incidents. And then in October, we were down to 56, and by February, we were down to 23. Anyone who's ever worked in schools knows about March. March, we were back to 39, okay? So far in April, we're back down to 11, though, as of two days ago, when I put this up. So the great thing, you know, about, about this data is that, you know, we can clearly see, show to not only our staff but also to our students, you know, the things that we're all working on together here every day are really working. And so we're excited about that. We just had a PLC yesterday afternoon where we're now at a point where we're getting to fine-tune and get really nitpicky about our behavior systems, which is exciting for me and for other professionals here, because when I first came here, we were building it from scratch, and now we're in a place where we get to be really nitpicky about, you know, defining specific behaviors and what is the difference between a distraction and a disruption. We're building matrices to be really, really consistent about the way we respond to individual behaviors, and so we're really getting into the nitty-gritty, and that's exciting for us. Because, yeah, two years ago, there just wasn't much there.
Phil, how do you, how do you define a major behavior?
How do I define a major?
Or could you maybe explain some typical behaviors?
Yeah, so that's, this is some work we're actually doing right now, David. It's a great question. Our charge is we have one meeting in May, I believe it's May 20th, I want to say, and our charge is by the end of that meeting to have actual definitions for each behavior that we categorize as a major behavior. So right now, the way we define a major behavior is if that, if the behavior we see is categorized as a major behavior, then it's a major behavior, okay? And we respond to that differently than a minor behavior. So we literally have lists of major behaviors, such as physical fighting, bullying, harassment, right, physical aggression is a whole, disruption is a major behavior. And then we have a list of what's considered minor. And generally, we have more majors than we have minors, because there's some things that we sort of, you know, as far as the way we report data that the state have to have in a major's list. But for most of our majors, they're sort of a corresponding minor. So for physical aggression, the corresponding minor would be physical contact. Our rule at school is we have no hands-on. So any type of physical contact, right, is an unexpected or unwanted behavior, but there's a difference between physical contact and physical aggression, and those are the things we're working on defining right now in a language that we can speak to our children about. We have definitions for those things that we can speak to each other about as professionals and adults. What we're working on right now, which we have to be, we have until May 20th to finish that project, that's our deadline, is making sure we have definitions of those behaviors that make sense to our, our kids, our students. Um, yeah.
So we're seeing incidents. Do you have numbers for how many children this represents? I mean, is it two kids? I mean, I mean, how many, what's the ratio, rate of incidents to children?
I just want to be clear. I'm like supposed to only take 15 minutes tonight?
Sorry.
Uh, no, it's okay. I don't apologize. I've just, I want to put that out there before I say, I chose this one set of data to show you. If I took you to the page where this data came from, we can break down our behavior data a lot of different ways. But in theory, this represents all, you know, 132 of our students, but we know that not all 132 of our students have, have participated in these incidents. I, off the top of my head, I would say that number is somewhere in the 50s of students who are represented here. But I could give you that number if we had the time, and I could talk to you for hours about all the cool ways with this new management system that we can look at this data. But I had to choose one. I promised myself I wouldn't just stand here and talk to you about behavior for 15 minutes, because that's about just.
I have a question, Ross.
Yes?
Is this pattern where basically the fall, there's more incidences and then it, as a rule, gets less? I know March is bad, but over the year, is that pretty consistent most school years?
No.
Okay.
So, um, there are a few things that happen. I mean, as with, as with any data, we sort of have to consider everything that's going on, okay? So, you know, to tell you that this, this is hardcore pure proof that we've had lessons of this all year, and our behavior's just gotten better, you know, other than March, all year long, um, this is a sign of that. It's not pure proof, because the other thing we know that happens is, you know, there's a little bit of fatigue with the actual documentation of things. So over, you know, over the course of a year, you will generally see some kind of slide. Last year, we saw a very slight slide to the point where we weren't sure if what we were doing was working or if it was just that fatigue thing. When we look at this, you know, the significance of a drop-off from 91 in the month of September to 23 in the month of February, we can say, yeah, part of that is probably the fatigue piece. But we very much hope that, you know, with a drop-off that's significant, you know, it's that what we're teaching and the way we're reinforcing is, is resulting in, in better overall student behavior. So that's pretty great. Yeah. Um, okay. Can we move on from behavior or are there more questions?
Yeah.
Great. Here we share.
Congratulations on the improvement.
Oh, jeez, thank you. Thanks so much. Very little to do with me and much more to do with all the boots on the ground, if you will. So something less frozen that we're looking at at Wallingford right now is our attendance data. Again, chose one set to show you, and I just want to take you through this screenshot a little bit. You see we're broken down by grade for attendance here. This says by all students, and then it says by school. That's just how it populates. That's the exact same thing. Okay, so it's showing me all students, but it's filtered to Wallingford, and then it's showing me by school, which is Wallingford. So these two set, these two bar graphs right here are literally the same data. And then we're broken down by grade right here. I should have just ended the screenshot here, and then I wouldn't have had to go through that silly explanation. But hindsight is 2020, isn't it? So, um, we are struggling with attendance right now. We do know, as maybe you heard, that part of that has to do with one of the, one of the wildest years in terms of illnesses that I've ever experienced. I was a school administrator during the COVID-19 pandemic, so I don't know that it exactly compares to that, but we have had some really interesting and widespread bugs here at Wallingford this year. Even with that being said, uh, this is, this is a set of data that is concerning to us and that we are, uh, right now in fairly early planning stages of how we're going to address it. But we're thinking that, you know, we need to try to build some kind of team. You know, we just had a community engagement meeting at the board level earlier tonight. We've had some conversations amongst the staff of trying to do something around that, more of a family engagement piece here at Wallingford. We have a lot of different sort of folks and groups that we need to try to tie into that, you know, anything from our PTO to the person in our building who actually tracks the attendance and sort of everyone in between. But as you can see, so just to sort of show, tell you a little bit what you're looking at here, um, in this, these, these sort of dark black bars in the middle here, anything to the left of that would be a student who's considered chronically absent, which means they've missed 10% of the school days or more. That 10% range is your orange, and then over in the red is anything 20% or more. So that's like, now we're looking at, you know, truancy at that, at that point. In pre-K, if you look, you see PK, that's our three-year-old, pre-kers, 4K, that's our four-year-old, pre-kers, and then K is kindergarten. We don't really work in the truancy area at those levels. Once we start getting into 1 through 6, then, you know, that's where those, those laws more apply. But as you can see, you know, luckily, with our oldest students, we're getting some pretty good attendance. Our sixth graders have been doing a great job. Maybe it's just their, their fully-formed immune system or nearly fully-formed immune system at work there. But this is something, you know, that we are looking at and know we need to do something about in the rather near future. I don't have a specific ask for you around this at this time, but, um, May later, so stay tuned.
So Phil, when you say that illness is, you feel like illness is a big part of this, so those 10 percenters, are they kids who came with doctor's notes and diagnoses or are you?
Yeah, and so that, that's an interesting question. Carol, what we're looking at here is just how often students were in school. Okay, so to say that, you know, these folks here, third graders in red, 20% or more days missed are truant would not be accurate, because this is not accounting for excused absences, this is just absences.
Oh, okay. That's good to know.
Yeah. Great question. Thank you. I almost missed that whole point. So this is, this is just, you know, these percentages are just based on any time a student misses school for any reason.
And so, and, and I might have read this wrong, and I'm not, I don't, not in Wallingford ten myth, but you guys weren't able to do your, like, winter, like, music?
We canceled the concert and the reschedule.
And was that because of?
And that was two different illnesses.
Yeah. And so for just like public of thinking about it and thinking about how bad absences are, if you think that you're not capable of doing a performance because they've been missing things or something, how much learning is being missed out by that on a daily basis? Like, so it's, it is a very large problem.
Yeah.
And I, you know, just reinforce, just trying to do it in a very concrete way. It's like, we can't even get enough kids in line to be able to do the concert, to do a, a show. How are we learning, teaching them how to do math?
Correct.
It's quite worrying.
You're with me, Josh. Thank you. So, um, yeah, and that's, that's part of the reason that when we look at chronically absent students, anyone missing, you know, 10% or more of the school days, we don't take into account why they missed, because the fact is they missed the instruction, right? So when, you know, when we talk about chronically absent, and we won't get into this, but a chronically absent student in, in elementary school, there's a lot of research out there that, you know, the negative impacts of that sort of can last a lifetime and certainly have, uh, like, the, the research I was reading most recently was talking about high school graduation rates and how those correlate with a student who's chronically absent, you know, even as far back as kindergarten. So those are the concerns that we have, right? Because at the elementary school level, we're really lucky to, you know, be able to work with these kids really early in life, and we, you know, all feel like we are having a great impact on them, you know, for the rest of their life, but if they're not here, we can't do that work, right?
And I hear you that you don't have a specific ask for the board right now, but we were just saying, we haven't looked at our student attendance policy since 2016, so it is something that the board, like, we have discussed, like, district ride attendance and know, like, that that's a priority. So it's something that the board can look at and just make sure that administration feels supported.
Yeah, I think that, just to add to that discussion, the, the key part of that would be digging into the whys of the absenteeism. You know, illness, I mean, that's a hard one to beat. If somebody's sick, you don't want them coming to school and infecting everybody else. But so knowing how that all breaks down, illness and other, because it's the other that conceivably, you know, are problems that could be addressed.
Certainly.
So in terms of our discussion about policy, that would be a little useful information at some point.
Yes.
Well, one thing I really noticed with these graphs, I know there's a few exceptions, but mostly it's younger children that have more critical, critically high absence rates. Older children can get themselves to school, they can want to school. Younger kids can't. It'd be really interesting to know how much of that absenteeism is caused by problems with transportation, uh, which are things that can be addressed at a school level.
I think it's some demographic breakdown on who's absent and what maybe boxes they check off and how we as a district are supporting those students.
To get them to school.
And once they're here as well.
Right.
Because if it's the social, emotional piece, they don't want to come to school, that's very different than illness.
Yeah.
So I think, again, we've got to look at, we need to break that down.
Yeah. At least as much like when we talked about the behavior data.
Understand.
This is one little set, and we could show you a lot more. So if anyone's interested in seeing any of that, you know, probably you'd be looking at it more on a district level, but if you want to see it for Wallingford, shoot me the mic.
Yeah, well, I mean, if we're going to have a discussion about it and review that policy.
If you're going to look at policy, we need data.
That would be helpful information.
Yeah. We've got it. Just if you want data for the whole district, just ask BJ, he's got the same stuff I do, but much larger scale. Okay. Any other questions about attendance? So that's, that's a big focus point, you know, for us moving into next year, because it's a little bit alarming. Wanted to show you a little bit of math data too, because that's another focus point moving into next year, and really not only here at Wallingford, but at all of our elementary schools, we made a decision as a leadership team, that those PLCs I talked about. You know, this year, each school kind of chose their own focus. It was behavior here at Wallingford and other things at other elementary schools. We're all going to be looking at math next year, which I think is really great. Pat talked a little bit about those math interventionists, and we're certainly hopeful that that works out, because that's another focus here at Wallingford, but really kind of district-wide at the elementary schools. We're really happy with the growth we've seen in our literacy scores since we switched curriculums, and we have an amazing intervention team, definitely here at Wallingford, you know, folks that work on literacy with individual students in small groups, and we've seen a lot of, a lot of great things happening, you know, since, since I took over here at Wallingford. With our literacy data, math is kind of the next thing we're going to try to tackle. So, uh, you'll notice it's kind of small, but up at the top, this is just grades 3 through 6 here at Wallingford that I'm showing you right now. And this, these are star 360 math scores from this school year, but I just wanted to show you sort of where we're at right now, and hopefully a year from now, kind of like I did with behavior. I did with behavior, I'll be showing you better data, right? But in the fall, you could see 48.6% of our students, you know, were on target. That's that percentage there. 51.4% of students were not proficient when it came to our mathematics standards. In the winter, we, we did see some improvement, fall to winter. We're now on the other side of the 50-50 battle. 54.1% of students were at target and 45.9% were not, right? But the fact remains, you know, half of our students, grades three through six at Wallingford, are not considered proficient when it comes to math statistics. So we're, we're really looking forward to that work ahead and some additional supports next year. And the other principals and I are going to meet, the other elementary school principals and I are going to meet here in the near future to talk about how we might structure some math intervention blocks into the day. And so that is another big focus point for us moving into next year. I thought, you know, since I got the April meeting, I'd try to talk more about next year and not just about this year. Because honestly, we're going to go on break next week and then, at least personally, I won't speak for all school administration, if you come back from April break and it's kind of, you've got a couple of things going on at the end of the year, you know, but it's hard not to be looking at next year. So we've made some great progress in the area of behavior. That work will continue, but won't be quite as time-consuming as we move forward. So our next two big things that we're going to be working on are getting our students here and helping them be proficient in math. Thanks for your time. Any questions about math?
Well, it seems like the one problem's probably pretty directly related to the other.
Yeah.
If they're not here, they're not learning math.
I wish I could totally agree with that. However-
Well, as a part of the-
I could show you data from last year where our attendance was better and our math was worse.
And I think our literacy, some of the work that we've done-
Forget what I said, Ken.
We just haven't done in math, and we've seen some of those gains in literacy, and we need to do the work in math too.
Okay.
And I think the other part of it is like, because we were super focused on literacy.
Yep.
You know, we had to change basically the whole curriculum, like the rest of the country's trying to do to catch up. And the bottom line is, if you're taking a math test, a lot of times you have to read questions. And so if you're in sixth grade-
First things first.
And you're not reading at a sixth grade level, it's much harder to do those math problems.
Sure.
So it's like, you know, it's the cart before the horse, you don't know which way you have to actually focus, but.
Well, actually, I guess you do know, right?
Yeah.
Like, if you need to be able to read the question to take the test.
I'd also like to see, just again, across all the schools, what we're doing for students who are meeting the standards. There's a lot of conversation about interventions and getting kids up to where they should be, but I'd like to see how we're pushing the kids who are there further. That's important.
Definitely.
Neglected, but important.
Yeah, that data didn't actually show people that were accomplishing beyond standards.
Right. So I think we often tend to focus on those who aren't succeeding, and we need to do it for those who are.
Yeah, I think-
In literacy as well.
That's, that's a huge challenge at just about every public school. Because as, yeah, I think, I think we do a great job with students who struggle, and I think sometimes it's, it's hard to figure out how to, how to challenge students that don't. And we've got some things going on at Wallingford where we've been sort of answering those questions, but we can talk about that sometime, David. I'd love to.
I think the other, the other thing in here, you know, too, but like, one of the things that having interventionists in the school, because we had this conversation about, I think, three years ago about, why are we spending so much on interventionists? Why are we just helping the lower? And part of the conversation is, well, that interventionist is helping a cohort of people, but then also allows the teacher to make, to be able to expand with those higher ed, you know, it's like, you know, you're trying to lift all boats, and I understand the, the concept of it.
I guess it depends on delivery model, but yeah.
Yeah.
Is that Dave?
You know, I think you've covered some of it here, but kind of specifically, obviously your slide shows you've made some progress during the course of the school year. And so what specifically can you do to up those scores? What is it that's being done? Is it just in the special ed area? Is there, you know, can you articulate exactly what is being done?
Yeah, so I can, I can talk about, you know, some of the things that are going to be done. I think I mentioned a few of them. You know, we're looking at trying to see how we can fit some time into our schedules, which are pretty tight, but trying to see how we can fit some time into our schedules for some math intervention time. Right now, our structure is that we have a 45-minute reading block in the day, we have a 45-minute writing block in the day, and then we have a 45-minute differentiated instruction block in the day that is just committed to literacy. So we're trying to figure, and that's working well. It gives us opportunities to intervene with students who struggle. That DI block, as we call it, also gives us an opportunity to push the students who are doing well. And so we're going to try to figure out a way to kind of model some time after that block, but in math. The board graciously, you know, included in the budget two math interventionists, so we're trying to add some support in that way. And then I mentioned that we'll be focusing one staff meeting a month on math for the entire school year next year, and that's where we'll be reviewing data and setting intervention groups and just trying to really focus on, on, on math instruction, but also how we're supporting that instruction.
Do you have a truant officer?
Yes, we do for the district, yeah. Joe Hoffman, Corporal Joe Hoffman, whose office is at Mill River.
So how much of your absenteeism is due to truancy percentage-wise?
Yeah. So I don't know if we have time to talk about truancy tonight. You know, I think-
That doesn't help your math scores either, does it?
No, and, and, you know, that's a tricky question to answer too, Mr. Potter. You know, how much of our absenteeism is due to truancy? I think maybe an easier question to ask, because truancy is a pretty specific definition that we get from the state. You're going to miss, you know, 20 unexcused absences in a year to be considered truant, but they're only going to accept that if we get them that information before March 15th. That's a, I don't know if we should get into truancy, but I think the question you-
We tend to spend more time on what can we do before they ever get there.
Right.
Because that's more impactful.
Yeah, solving root problems.
Yeah.
Because truancy is, yeah, that's a good point, Brian. Truancy is really at the state level, and honestly-
It's too late.
As, as we heard about at a recent training that many of us attended, using truancy law to improve attendance is a gigantic waste of time. So I think a better question to ask is, how many of our absences are unexcused, right? Or, or not due to illness, back to your point, Mr. Wicker. You know, that's, that's more of what we're looking at, and then what are the root causes of those absences? Are they social emotional factors? Are they logistical issues like transportation, you know, and trying to solve those root problems? So that's what we're looking at with attendance.
Okay. Thank you, Phil.
Teresa, did you want to use the screen?
No. I have something.
I will turn it off.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I sent it to folks. If you want to look at it on your screen, great. If you want a paper copy, we have a paper copy.
I'll do a paper copy.
I'll do a paper copy.
I'm old fashioned.
If I can find it on my screen.
Say if you have them, I'll take one.
Yeah. Take one, because you know, try and find this.
Yeah, yeah.
In case you have not met me before, this is my-
Hey, you guys. We have a presenter.
Can you hold on a second? They're very-
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Very antsy over here.
Okay.
I think they're, you guys ready?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, thank you.
Hello, I'm Teresa. I am the Director of After School Programs. This is my third year with our district, and many of the things that Phil and the board are talking about, I immediately went to, well, there's a ton of research around the correlation, the positive correlation between participation in after-school programs and attendance in school and in grade. So just want to tuck that in there. We have a lot of folks working at the state level to advocate for after-school programming, and I'll be talking a tiny bit about that as we go through this. And I feel Phil's pain in trying to pick what are the most important little tiny data points that might make sense and be meaningful to use, so I hope these fit that bill. Our elementary programs are, of course, the, like, meat and potatoes of our out-of-school time programming. As they go into high school, it becomes much more specific in terms of the interests of the students, and we'll talk about that when we talk about the high school program. But the elementary programs are fee-based, so either the families pay or the state pays, and they're licensed by the State of Vermont, the Department for Children and Families. So they're a little more complex and also incredibly critical for just the wellness of our kiddos. The first page is just a snapshot of what our registration versus daily average attendance is, and I think what's really interesting and sometimes a little frustrating, kind of like the truancy, is how many students are registered for program, yet how few attend on a daily basis. And a big part of that are folks' perception of the program is that it's childcare, right? I'm going to send my kiddos if they need to go, if I have something to do, they're going to go, as opposed to like a scouting program or sports program. You don't just drop your kids off at soccer because you've got to go grocery shopping. They're on the soccer team. It's the same with after-school program, you sign your child up for after-school program because of what they're going to get out of that program. Yes, it's a convenience and it serves that need, but that shouldn't be the sole driver for that need. The numbers that come behind the CCFA, that's Child Care Financial Assistance, that's indicating how many students are utilizing childcare financial assistance to pay for the program. And Tin Myth has a really amazing number of families, Brian and I were talking the other day about, it's a very bittersweet conversation to be excited about folks utilizing childcare financial assistance because that indicates a hardship, just like it's, we talk a lot about the importance of families filling out their free and reduced meals applications so that we can qualify for grants and funding, and it's a bittersweet conversation because we don't want families to be in that situation. We want them to be thriving financially. The importance of childcare financial assistance is the State of Vermont has invested heavily in childcare. It's really coming from states like Florida and Arizona where they were sucking away childcare financial assistance to a state where we're expanding it is just incredible. Important things to note, Act 76, which was passed, I think, last year, the time is going by so quickly, expands the eligibility bracket for families to 400% above the poverty level. The state's goal is really what shifted, so instead of just paying for childcare, they're paying for the infrastructure of childcare, paying to increase the quality and quantity of out-of-school time or early childhood programs for families. And that's a huge shift. Also, a, a big shift that is a positive for us is that instead of just paying the cost of the care, they're paying for the cost of the program. So the state allows us to bill them now on enrollment versus attendance. So if a child is not there, we still are able to bill the state because it's based on providing the space for the children, and we can't access those dollars if the families don't send their kids. Or like we're talking about for Wallingford, we have so many students absent that really affects our ability to be able to provide continuity of services. And then I put down our rate that we charge families is $9 a day for the first child, $7 for additional children, and you can compare that to what the average financial award is, $140 to $240 per week. Another big change in the state, which is a good one, there is a quality recognition program. It is called STARS. We do love ourselves some acronyms, so it's a step-ahead recognition system. I try to always explain acronyms because we speak them fluently and forget that we're not in a silo, and other folks are like, what are these letters you're tossing at me? But step-ahead recognition system, which is STARS. And this is typically a private center is more important because if you're a parent and you're trying to find a quality program, you're looking for recommendations in a way to determine whether or not this is a quality program, STARS is a step ahead of licensing. Licensing is the lowest level of safety standards to legally operate. Licensing is not some sort of, like, certificate of high excellence, but STARS is, and there are five different levels of STARS. So for our programs, where we have kind of a captive audience, it's a little less relevant because we're not trying to recruit people from all around, like a tri-county area or something, to come to our center, but it's incredibly important for private centers. What it is important about for us, though, is that it's connected to specialized childcare, which we have lots of students receive specialized childcare, and you have to have a STARS rating to be able to serve those children, and our programs get a bonus when they achieve their first star rating and then when they achieve higher star ratings. So all of our programs have gotten their three stars, which is the minimum to be specialized care providers, and we're not going for four stars because if we did that all at once, we wouldn't be eligible for an additional bonus. So we're going for our three stars this year, and then we can re-up for our four stars next year and be eligible for the additional bonus. I'm not trying to, like, give that money away, so. And Tin Myth is on a combined license, so Sarah Bolster is driving that program as opposed to myself, we're supporting and providing data for her. Mill River, so with the middle school and high school kids, again, they're much more specific in what they enjoy doing, so what we're finding, or at least what I'm finding in my few years here, is that they're not really interested in a center-based program, like in an elementary school, where we have an after-school program, the kids come in and they go and do an activity. They just want to do an activity. They don't want to be associated with anything smacking reminiscence of, of after-school programs in the elementary school. We also have a lot of students participating in sports and theater and other clubs, so for a small school, we already have a highly engaged group of students. So what, I'm wiggling my way in there, and we have a few different, like, clubs, if you will, and I'm really trying to focus on what students want to do and who are the adults that want to do that with them, and how can I make that happen? So this year, we had amateur radio club. One of our staff, our facility staff is highly involved in the amateur radio club in Rutland, and we had a student that actually passed their tests, and they have their amateur radio license. It's all set up on my office. It's a pretty cool thing if you've never seen it, and I'm really hoping we get more kids. I think they just don't know what it is. And so now that we've got one who has done it, hopefully we can get more to come in and do it because it's, it's connected to so many fields, this technology is like the basis of everything that we do right now, this radio stuff, which is like run by magical fairies, as far as I know. I don't think about that. The rock climbing team is another very vibrant club. We had 24 kids that participated in that. That runs from November through March. It's a pretty long season. We had a first Lego robotic team called the Sepulow Squad, and Karen McCullough, who you all know and Scott, headed that up, and our team did amazing. They made district championships, which was incredible for a rookie team, and at their first meet, which was at UVM, they won a, a special award called an evergreen tree or some, the first Lego competitions are really amazing because the kids don't just win, like, I've got first place, but they have all these different tiers of awards that they can qualify for. All of this is funded primarily by our after-school revenue and small grants, especially the Sepulow Pod Team. So for me, when I think about out-of-school time budget, I see the whole cake, right? There's, we have cost centers, like Mill River will always be a cost center, it will never pay for itself because the families are not going to pay for their high school kids to come and do these activities at a rate that will pay for what it costs for one of those activities, and our after-school programs generate a surplus. be a cost center. It will never pay for itself because the families are not going to pay for their high school kids to come and do these activities at a rate that will pay for what it costs for one of those activities. And our after-school programs generate a surplus. So instead of just separating out the after-school program surplus and letting it just roll from year to year, we can put those dollars actively to work and provide these programs and activities for the kids at Mill River and hopefully build a continuum. We did have robotics at Clarendon and it was open to the whole district too. So we did have a younger first LEGO team. So our goal is to get those kids in first LEGO in elementary school and then start a middle school as well as a high school team at Mill River. So trying to connect and have a continuum of services and not have them be so isolated elementary from high school. Okay. I'm going to go fast and cover it up. Funding, so childcare financial assistance, we're really trying to get all of our families to apply because 400% above the poverty line, it doesn't hurt, right, to apply. And it helps us out. And so the way we're describing it to families is it's like this amazing funding, but we can't tap into it unless you do. So our parents are our gatekeepers for that. Act 78 is another grant that has two tiers of funding, one for activities, like all the ones at the high school, as well as one that's a comprehensive center. Act 78 is kind of like a baby sibling to 21st Century. It's funded from tax dollars from the sale of cannabis. So that's a pretty good use of some of that money. And I'm working with Scott and Karen McCullough, as well as Scott Wallett, and hopefully Zach, to try to apply for Act 78. It's built on a school community partner model. And the robotics folks have their own 501(c). So I think we might be set up to be successful. And it's a three-year grant cycle. And it's like a sustaining grant. So I'm really hopeful we'll have a competitive application for next year. I've been working with the site directors to try to help develop their financial acumen. I think they had been separate from how we fund these programs and how much influence the site staff have on the budget. I can write the budget, Stan sees it, you guys pass it, but I don't get to control it except in arrears because I'm not at every site saying how many staff are there. And if we have 27 kids sign up for a day and we've bought the supplies, the staff are there, but 12 kids show up, that's a big difference in our funding and our ability to control our costs or expenses. So helping the staff understand how that works has been really helpful and really helped to build trust and relationship between the administrative staff and what's happening on the site, that we're all working together, we're all equal, we're just carrying different parts of this process along the way. Couple of folks have asked about 21(c), which we used to have, we no longer have. And one of the tricky things, and Stan, you can keep me on path if I'm wrong about this, with federal funds, you can't supplant other funds. And since we have a surplus right now, not using other funds, that's what we would be doing if we tried to apply for 21(c). And if we keep generating a surplus, we may never even be able to spend it because we have to spend down all our other dollars first. So in case anybody was wondering.
And a little clarification. When we talk surplus during budget season, we're talking about unanticipated surplus dollars we had pledged towards something and we weren't able to spend. When Teresa says surplus, she means we generated revenue and it's more than we were going to spend. So it's a different kind of surplus. So in after-school program world, that surplus gives the after-school program the ability to run with a low budget because they're able to get revenue from the state for these subsidies and it allows them to do more wonderful things for their program.
If we're Mill River, that's how we funded Mill River. So all those activities at Mill River was through utilizing these other funds.
And summer camp too. Summer camp would come at a huge cost if we just said, hey, local taxpayers, pay for a summer camp. But the way Teresa looks at budgeting and tries to be really mindful of, you know, what is costing us, what can we do more efficiently we're able to run summer program, not at a huge cost to taxpayers, which is correct.
Including summer programming, our average daily cost to provide program is $26. This was a conversation I just had with the staff on Monday because they were talking about fee increases. I'm like, hmm, it's more important that more kids come more often than it would be to raise the price of the daily rate by a dollar or two because then we only have still 12 kids coming versus 25, 30 kids coming. We want more children to come for a variety of reasons. But yeah, that's our average cost right now per day is about $26 to operate everything that we're doing.
Something I appreciate about Teresa's work is she's always looking for how are the ways we can improve things. And a conversation we've been having for two years is, wow, looking at the budget landscape across the state and changes, we don't know where things are going to land. How can after-school work in a way that it becomes so self-sustaining that it's never a question of eliminating it? And I think that's a very valuable mindset, not just for the program, but for our community.
Yeah, for sustainability and having it be a continued, so much of what we do can support the work of the school day but not replicate the work of the school day. So the more we can collaborate and align like a little, you know, twig off the tree of school, I think the more successful our students can be during the school day. So that's, I'm continuing to work towards how can we learn what's important for our students during the school day and for their success. And then what can we do in after-school? So we're not tutoring them, but if you think about STEM activities, cooking activities, carpentry activities, they have to read, they have to do math, they have to measure, be able to use a hammer without smashing things, solve problems. So there's just all these skills that are just hidden like cauliflower pizza, which is so important.
I just have one comment. It sounds like one of your big challenges is getting parents to understand that this is not glorified daycare, that if they sign up, it's actually really important that their children come. And I wonder if that might not be a topic for community conversations presentation as a way of getting the word out to people and explaining to them that, hey, this is important stuff and here's why. Just as a thought.
Do you go to PTO meetings and talk about this?
The site directors are the ones who develop the programs and they often go like Cheryl Minari here at Wallingford is kind of a legend. I think there's not anybody here that Cheryl knows. And it will, the PTO is a great place to go and try to share, you know, with folks. And I think we have many causes and just have to think about collective impact, right? Like what can we do to help have a paradigm shift around folks thinking about our program more like they would about a soccer team or, I don't know that we have scouts here. Haven't heard about that for us. Or, you know, theater or something. You don't just go when it's convenient. If you're on the football team, you go to football every time.
Yeah. I have a question about with these attendance numbers. When somebody signs up their child for the summer program, is it for the whole summer?
Summer is by a session. And a session is a week, let's say.
So they sign up by the week?
Yep. So you can sign up for one week or there's five weeks, all five weeks. Summer is incredibly expensive for us to run. It's a cost center for certain. There's about a $20,000 deficit from summer. So we have to try to stockpile up our little savings during the school year to fund summer. But yeah, most of our families register for all five weeks. Another important thing about summer, just to put out there, our average daily attendance for summer camp is about the same if you add up all four of our elementary schools. And there are so many options in the summer. During the school year, we're the only option. If you're here in Wallingford, where is your child going to go after school? At home, to an empty house. But in the summer, community-based organizations have an amazing array of programs and they can do things that we can't do. So I love for folks to be able to take advantage of like the community or rec centers, programs, or any other organization. There's like theater camps and science camps and the mid-caps camps. There's so much stuff for kids that they can do. And I think having those community connections is really important. The big drawback is, most of those summer camps, parents that use childcare financial assistance can't use them in those programs because they're not licensed. So that's why I try to, like, our priority is really getting those kids that utilize subsidies, not just because we receive more, but because I know that they cannot use their subsidies.
Their options are limited.
Limited. Okay, Teresa, thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
She's been trying to say something.
Oh, no. Well, I know. I realized we were going over time. I was just curious because I know Act 76 was one of the things that was maybe funding was going to go away. Right now, the funding, I think, is safe in the state budget. But what would the impact be from your perspective if we lose Act 76 funding in the future?
Well, Act 76 doesn't, do you mean childcare financial assistance? Act 76 expanded childcare financial assistance?
Right. Like if we lose the expansion of it, like what it's helping.
Oh, yeah.
The biggest change for us would be if they went back to an attendance-based billing versus enrollment-based billing, because that's where we're able to bill for kids, like when they don't show up for two weeks. We can still bill the state because it's, once those families register, that's the enrollment for our program. And so the state starts paying for the expansion.
If they're CCFA, if they're that, if they qualify for that financial assistance piece?
Mm-hmm. Yep. If the 400% over the poverty level doesn't mean that you get, you'll have a parent co-pay or a family co-pay. And it's more important than infant, anybody that's ever had an infant in childcare knows the cost difference between infant care and after-school care. So it's more important for families that maybe are looking at like a $900 a month bill for infant care. And so they've got a parent co-pay of $300. For us, the parent co-pay for somebody who's at that 400% would probably be like far more than we would even charge. So it'd be, it's already as though they don't have financial assistance, if that makes sense.
I think, yeah, I think I am. Thank you for taking me.
I just have one comment. And Brian, you can, it's just a, just overall, just saying, this is an administration position that like we talk about a lot of times about, oh, are we too heavy on administrators or not? But from my understanding, before we had, you were here, our after-school programs weren't necessarily running the surplus and weren't in such good states. Or we didn't have as good of, they weren't running as well.
We weren't, we weren't 100% sure. We, I think we just, the ongoing conversations that Teresa and I have, we're able to cover a lot of ground and figure a lot of things out. And we know that things are continuing to grow. You know, we had a strong program and somebody who built a strong program. And then that program ran for a lot of years. So I think the value right now in Teresa's role is finding the efficiency of growing the programs. If you can do both at the same time, holy cow, you know, especially in this landscape where funding is becoming more and more challenging. And Teresa's been able to do both, which is great.
And as Teresa mentioned before, we had the 21(c) grant, we could not keep a surplus. So we were basically giving back about $100, $120,000 a year that we could not keep.
And 21(c) is a lot of paperwork and jumping through hoops to be given that money back.
Okay, thanks again, Teresa. All right. We have board committee membership.
Okay. We have two new Clarendon board members. And we have vacancies, two on the community engagement committee, and then one on personnel and one on policy.
Right. And so what I did is I went ahead and just replaced the folks that were on that committee. Let's see where it is. Oh, gosh, you think I'll be able to find it? Nah. Here it is. So Clarendon one, which is Andrea's position, which Dave is taking, correct? So Dave, you're going to be community engagement, personnel and policy. And I'll shoot you an email with that, with the schedules and stuff. And you're good?
Yep, yep, yep.
And Clarendon two, which is Rich, community engagement, same, personnel and policy.
That's why those committees were short today.
Policy. Help me though, personnel and policy, I only had one vacancy. So do I have somebody on personnel and policy that shouldn't be anymore?
Let's see.
I think we just have more people now.
Yeah. One, two, three, four, five. I have Lenny.
On personnel, Len, Kim, Sarah, Dave.
Dave and Rich.
Cornwell, sorry, just to be clear.
Oh, Dave Cornwell.
Right. We had done that at our last meeting.
Personnel. Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six. So we have six on personnel.
So we've got an extra. So I think, I think we need Mr. Potter, Mr. Clark. We only need one on personnel and one on policy.
Okay. But then they only have two committees.
Yeah.
It's kind of the shake of how it works.
It just works out. And you guys are new, so that'll give you an opportunity to focus.
You want to see if one of them would prefer personnel or policy?
Okay, yeah. Do either of you, I mean, personnel or policy?
I prefer policy.
Policy. And you'll be personnel, okay, Dave? And Rich will be policy. Oops. Okay.
And both on community engagement.
And you're both on community engagement, which is you guys.
Can, can somebody make a motion to add those members to the communities as we just discussed, or the committees as we just discussed?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. All right. So I'm going to change this. Okay, we're good. All right, committee reports.
Oh, wait, wait.
No?
Stan has auditor contract, which we had a updated warning. So you may be on a, sorry.
I'm on the other one. Okay, Stan, auditor report. Just knock, knock me off.
Bringing to the board tonight, the, a three-year contract that our current auditors have offered to us. There is an increase in price in regards to the audit we just concluded with for FY '24. We paid, that audit fee was around 32, 32.5 for this past year. For FY '25, which is the year we are in, that fee jumps up to 38,500. The, for FY '26, the fee goes to 40,125. And for '27, which is 41,830.
Can I pause you? Why don't we, can we get a motion so we can discuss?
Okay.
So a motion to
To approve the, or to
Approve, accept a three-year contract.
Yeah. Approve the three-year contract.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay. And a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Sarah. Okay, discuss.
We did see, we received communication to them, to, from them, letting us know why there was going to be an increase in their, in their prices. They cited changes in regulations that would, you know, increase their audit time within districts. And it also made them, these new regulations, made them reevaluate the clients that they have in the State of Vermont, which they have a substantial amount of clients in Vermont. So they reviewed that list. Some districts were let go, others were given the opportunity to stay. And we were on the list for the opportunity to stay.
Lucky us.
We can go out, we can go out and put it out to bid to see if we could find something lower. They're practically the only game in town for the State of Vermont. We have seen a very, a big decrease in auditors in the state during school districts.
What's your?
Me being one of them. I used to do it and got out because of the regulations that are involved and the costs that are involved to maintain government auditing standards.
So to paraphrase what Stan just told you, our normal auditor said, the regulations have changed again. It's going to become harder and more expensive to do this work. So we're only keeping the clients that we feel confident that we can do this work for. So I think that's a testament to the way Stan runs the business office, that we have audits that are, that are clean and don't have substantial findings and we're easy to work with. So we're in, I think, a good position that we didn't get dropped.
So they gave us 30 days to decide whether or not we wanted to continue or put it out to bid. If we do put it out to bid, then we would go on their waiting list.
Stan, I have a question. I remember in years past, our audits would, we wouldn't get them till like two years later. Have we gotten, it seems like we get quick or...
We get them within the same year.
Yeah.
But there is lag time due to the fact that these audits just take longer to complete.
Right, right.
But the Uh, but they are done in time.
In time to help you.
To help us to, for, for next year and also to file anything that's required with the state and the federal government.
Okay, so that's, that's important, that they, they're somewhat prompt in their work.
Now, I did look and check around with three other districts that use them in the area. This, you know, so for this past year, uh, the range of fees that were charged to these districts were from 46,000 to 55,000. Uh, the 46,000 was a district, uh, the Lolo district, which is more comparable in size. Where we are, the other two were Fairhaven and, and northeast, which is Brandon. So even with the three-year bid, we're still coming in under that, you know, 46,000 that Two Rivers was charged this past year. And, and basically what Mark, uh, Brian says, it's based on the amount of time that for, for them to come in and do the audit and uh my staff does a great job of getting the audit package together for them to make it easier on them and more time efficient. So my recommendation would be to accept the three-year bid from RHR Smith.
So we have a motion, a second, any other discussion?
What are even the options for schools that?
Yeah.
Hopefully this never happens to our school district, but.
It did happen to our school district.
There you go.
Before, the year before COVID, the, the big auditor in the state uh got in, best, got into some regulatory problems and they could not do any more single audits with school districts. Uh, the, the firm that does us now and does a lot of uh school districts in the state, they're actually from, originally from Maine. They came in and kind of saved the day and then started to establish an office. They now have, you know, established themselves in the state of Vermont where they've hired Vermont auditors to do all the Vermont school districts.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of good options if that happens, though, I imagine.
No, you have to, like we had to, we ended up going out of state. You're probably gonna have to go out of state and pay a decent fee.
Thank you for all your work, Stan.
Yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks.
There we go. Thank you, Stan. Okay, now we're on to committee reports. Okay. Lenny's not here for personnel. Did he give you a report or?
Uh, we have not had a meeting since, so I think we're good. He only shared that our next meeting is gonna be 5:00, 7:00 at 6:00 PM. No contracts or anything like that coming, so we're, we're in good shape leaving it at that.
Okay, policy. Uh, that's Kim, right?
That was, I, it's me, if I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay, do you want Gray to report?
So, so, so yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna fill this in. So we had a really good policy meeting, actually. Lot of stuff. Um, first thing, probably the best thing we did was we elected Kim as the chair policy committee. Uh, spent quite a bit of time talking about cell phone policy and moved the ball forward by um, uh, Jody volunteered to bring us three possible options for our next meeting, which is great because, you know, we've done all of this polling and questions, but so now we're actually getting into the nitty-gritty of how are we gonna do this thing, which is very exciting to me. And thank you for that, Jody. There's a, a due state or VSB a threat assessment policy that is six pages long, single-spaced. And so we sort of looked at it and said, hmm, maybe we should all go home and read this and think about it before we attempt to discuss it. So that basically just got deferred to the next meeting, cause it looks really dense and thick. Uh, then there was a brief discussion on F32, which is the transgender policy. And basically, again, we just kicked the can down the road. That's on the agenda for next time. And we're kind of in wait-and-see mode, see how that goes. But it, um, it allows us to keep it in place and be ready to react if the feds give us a hard time. The next one we looked at was A6, uh, which is about the public comment policy. And um, we basically decided to leave it the way it was, except for uh change the review date on it. But um, we got clarification from VSB A on that, is my understanding. And that gives us the kind of reasonable leeway to set our rules about public comment. So there you have it. Uh, let's see, the next one was D4 and that one was um, which is about staff evaluations. And we had a bit of discussion about that, actually, but at the end of that, decided to leave it the same, except to uh update. And then the last one was D5. Um, which one was D5?
Personnel files.
Personnel policy, thank you. Um, and we voted to accept as written, except, and this was based on um David's suggestion and we all agreed, I believe it was your suggestion, which is to have, that wasn't you?
Me, man, I'm not, I kinda have my copy here.
You can have the credit for it.
Sure.
Which was to have the legal references removed from the bottom because they change so often that they were kind of obsolete.
Yep.
But um otherwise it would be, stay the same. And uh, I guess, what did I not say, Jody? Yeah, Jody has volunteered to provide copies of the VSB A model policy for the library at next meeting? I'm reading my own notes.
It's a library material selection. It's a required VSB A policy.
Okay. And so you can see, it was a busy meeting.
Oh, yeah.
There you have it.
And it looks like, is this correct, Gray, that for tonight, we're asking for the board to approve A6, D4, D5 for first read? Cause we, the changes were figured out on those ones for now. Is that right?
Uh, yeah, I think that's correct.
Yes.
And are, just, I'm sorry, I'll wait for a motion to happen.
Okay.
That could be you.
Someone wanna make a motion to accept?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we accept.
I'll second that.
A6, D4, D5 for first read?
And are, my question is, uh, for like the numbering and conventions, like are these getting changed to, are they where they're staying?
Yeah, they're, they seem to make sense. They're, they were, you know, organizationally, the kind of logical spots.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, um, all in favor? Okay. All right, building and grounds, is that?
Yep.
Josh?
Yep, so we haven't had a meeting since the last, but um I would, included in your packets was um bids for replacing the main gym floor at Mill River. Cause it is finally met its last sanding and finishing work. I think we're at 50 years on it or something, you know, like where it's like the original floor, I believe. Is it not that old? I, that's what Tim said, but I think it's not that old.
Might be closer to like 20 years or something. I think it's been
Been replaced.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah, I think.
Yeah.
Um, and just for understanding of the floor itself, it's like a complicated subfloor structure, which is one of the problems of, of the cost, is that it's basically, you know, a floor that's, it's, the concrete is about six or eight inches below the floor itself. And then there's a set of, you know, lifters basically that suspend the floor above that. You can no longer finish it, so we have to replace it. And it's not viable to replace in like a similar way that we've done in the smaller gym, where you're just putting a coating on top of it. So this would be a full replacement and we're looking at Stephen or Brian, correct me if I'm incorrect on this, but it would be us accepting a bid now for the summer of, not this coming summer, but the summer following.
I believe so.
I think that is so.
Summer of '26.
Right. And it seems like all of these contractors, it was, you had to do it now if you wanted to even have a chance for that to occur. And because of the project size, it is a, it is a summer project.
And only thing I would add to that is because of the nature of the funding, we can do that. Normally, we wouldn't be approving things to be done outside of the fiscal year. But our, our building sinking fund, where we put our surplus funds in on our, on the ballot, that can be used at any point in time. So you can do that tonight.
And in discussion of like that, uh, just to further that and just kind of put a point on it, the whole function of buildings and grounds is to spend that other pool of money.
Mm-hmm.
It's not in our yearly budget fund.
They are the decision-making group there because when we earmark that money, we earmark it for BNG on the ballot. So it, it wouldn't be very transparent if Tim just went and spent the money however he wanted. So we wanna do that work in the public eye.
Shrewsbury.
So you need a um
A motion, yeah, to accept the bid from Danaher floor, which was for 231,950 dollars.
Okay, is there a second? Gray, second? Any more discussion about that?
Will we be going with like the similar material that was there, like hardwood floor?
Yeah.
Okay, just.
It's a like replacement. It's not going to like that soft material. It's putting in uh A legit. Yeah, regular basketball floor.
As we've mentioned a couple of times, that's also a, at least a somewhat of a revenue center for the school itself, for rentals.
Right.
Throughout the year and.
Yeah. Yeah, both of those spaces get used and even in the week, like the weekends during the uh, like spring and things, like there's tournaments and things that can occur in that, in that space. And just generally a community space for, that, that people can use.
I have a question about the revenue center. So if people are using that facility, does that go back into the buildings and grounds fund or where does that income go?
Yeah, that is set aside specifically, so that doesn't go anywhere else.
Yeah.
So it stays in the same?
Yeah.
It, it would be used to, to support buildings type work.
Or refinish that floor or whatever, okay.
And to be, like, the middle, the smaller gym, like that revenue source compared to how much it costs is, is like a functional thing. For this project, it's not, it the, you know, it's so, it's, it's a lot more expensive. So it is like, it helps, but it's not gonna be like, oh, in like 40 years.
It's not gonna make a big difference, right?
We kinda covered.
Yeah, but the bottom line is we have to replace the floor.
100%.
It's kind of icing on the cake that we actually get to make some money out of it, which we at some point wouldn't be able to do if we didn't replace the floor.
Correct.
So.
Looks like these guys have done local, tons of local places, Castleton, Rutland High School.
Yep. They're a local, local company.
Local base at Shrewsbury is like, that's what I'm seeing.
Okay. The kids went to Mill River.
Yep, keep our money. Right. And I think, that's a good point to raise because we had, in a few meetings ago, we had a conversation about, about that, where we were purchasing equipment from and things like that.
Yeah, same for like the floors in Wallingford, local. So we're trying to stay local.
Love it.
Okay, all in favor?
Is there a next BNG meeting?
Uh.
Yeah, 28th.
We talked about the 28th at 5. What we changed was finance.
Okay, thank you.
And it's at 5 o'clock.
Okay, community engagement.
So I guess that's me or you?
You, Sarah.
So we had a community engagement meeting tonight. Uh, there was a lot of people here, actually, which is great. Uh, the main topic, well, there was two topics. One was the 50th anniversary discussion, uh, which is a lot of interest in, and the cell phone policy. We had a very impassioned participants from the community. All of them were in favor of a, that we're speaking as cell phone, a, a pretty comprehensive cell phone. Yeah. So um, that was really interesting. And um, we decided that I'm going to reach out to people on the signup list and solicit a leader for the committee for the 50th anniversary, so we can have somebody else take care of that. And the next meeting is on May 21st, right? Yeah, May 21st, yeah. Oh, and actually, the next meeting is not going to be a conventional meeting. Hopefully, the next meeting is going to be community conversations with members of the state legislature here from the, this area and surrounding areas. And Carol has offered to reach out. And we would advertise that to the community so that they would participate in that. So hopefully, we are able to get more than one person. Carol.
Excellent. Okay, negotiations.
Uh, we're still having forward momentum with negotiations.
All right.
Still negotiating.
Still.
Good, the negotiators are negotiating.
Yeah.
Okay, and finance, Stephen?
We have payroll warrants, um, April 11th in the amount of 638,799 dollars and 41 cents. I'll make a motion to approve this payroll warrant. Kim, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? And our accounts payable warrant, warrants, it's hard to do this one last, there's not so many words to say.
Yeah.
Accounts payable warrants, general fund in the amount of 472,894 and 49 cents. A general fund in the amount of 18,525 and 73 cents. ASP in the amount of 300, that's, yeah, uh, 346 dollars and one cent. And lunch in the amount of 2,852 dollars and seven cents for a total of 494,618 and 30 cents. Um, we also have student activ, we don't have student activities. So a total of 494,618 and 30 cents. I'll make a motion to approve these payable warrants.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Excellent. And we have uh upcoming meeting.
Did we come up with a date?
I think May 29th was uh the date we've landed on. So our next finance meeting on May 29th, we have quite a few agenda items, I believe, at this time. We'll be discussing, or we'll be getting some legislation, legislative session updates and how that might frame our strategy looking at fiscal year 27 budgeting. Um, and I believe we will also be having a fiscal year 26 conversation um for uh a non-budgeted staff position, a discussion around that.
Okay, and the time?
Uh, I think we said 5. 5:00 PM, yeah.
It's 5:00 PM.
What's the non-budgeted staff position?
The nursing position.
Oh, the nurse, that's right, okay.
Okay. Okay. We're on to transact other legal business. Um, Lenny wasn't able to be here, um, but he did send something that he would like to have read. Um, and so I will read it. "In 1974, Henry Burnham was chosen as the first superintendent of the then Rutland South Supervisory Union. Students from Wallingford, Clarendon and Shrewsbury would be attending, at the time, an unnamed high school which did not yet exist. Mr. Burnham, Burnham was an integral part of this new supervisory union, overseeing the construction of the high school and hiring staff all before the building was in place. He knew every bus route and every stop. His knowledge of even the most intricate aspects of the budget were legendary. Most importantly was his dedication to the communities and providing their students with the best educational opportunities. Henry led by example. His humility, work ethic and willingness to introduce new technology served as examples for the newly hired staff. He was a true lifelong learner and teacher. He set high expectations for the staff and therefore the students. Mr. Burnham retired in 1997 after having led in the completions of additions to Clarendon and Mill River. Because of his knowledge of all things Mill River, the communities and school board members trusted him to lead those endeavors. His impact on students, staff and local communities was a result of his desire to provide opportunities for all. For many, his impact is still felt today. Henry left to be with his loving wife on March 29th, 2025. I personally thank him for his leadership as well as his amazing example of what an educator should be. All the best served by keeping in mind Henry's personal goal that students come first in every decision-making process." Did Len write that?
Lenny wrote that.
Wow.
Beautiful.
Yeah, it's quite a tribute.
Thank you, Lenny. Yeah, that's beautiful. Thank you, Mr. Burnham. You hear about Henry Burnham all the time. Okay. Um, oh, see, I put my agenda away. All right.
If any need for executive session?
Oh, hold on, agenda building.
Oh, agenda building, sorry.
Nope, all good. Uh, next, next time around, we will be back at Mill River. We will have on our schedule an intervention update. So that's Deborah Gardner-Bosch would give us our annual intervention update. We have sports from Kim Minieri update. And then we have board goals. Uh, we will have a full complement of board members. So we will be able to review our board goals and I think that'll be an important thing to check in on at that point in the year.
Is that a time, is it too early to start thinking about our retreat? Cause I know we get closer to this.
You could, you could, I think
You could, I think that's a really reasonable thing to ask folks to come to that meeting with some dates and do some picking of dates of the retreat.
Okay.
I didn't know if it was too early.
Absolutely.
No, earlier the better.
Of just use of time and space, too, like, just doing the doodle, whatever that, that thing is
Is a little faster.
Is so much faster.
Yeah, where you pick the dates.
Yeah.
Any other things that we see a need to have on that agenda? Okay. That's all I got.
I'm trying to think what else we have. Okay. Now, do we need executive session?
None I'm aware of.
I think so. Okay. We are adjourned.